And we're live, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for August 24th, 2020, and if we could have a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Very good. We're all present. I apologize for the late start. We had some other matters we were dealing with earlier and a good lively discussion with the, on some issues that are very important. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you had asked for a report on the soils sampling process for the Jefferson Parkway. And you will recall that the soil sampling program that was underway last summer was paused for a while. And we then, the Parkway, Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority started working with the Department of Public Health and Environment to expand or to have a more transparent and robust soil sampling, soil sampling program. I would like to invite Bill Ray, our colleague and executive director of the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority to introduce what happened after that. And I know we have Jennifer, I want to say Opelia, is that correct?
It's Opila.
Oh, Opila, okay.
Yeah.
My apologies. I know that Bill will also invite Jennifer to present most of the information. Bill, would you please take over?
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to be before you, even if only virtually. So thanks for the opportunity to bring you up to date on the status of the Parkway. As Mark had alluded to, the authority last spring had a very extensive sampling of soils in the right of way adjacent to the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. We had planned and actually ultimately took some 250 samples from about the two and a half miles of length of the Parkway. And in the course of that, we did encounter one anomalous sample. So which was frankly unlike any other that had been analyzed or encountered by any previous study that I'm aware of in the history of Rocky Flats. To that end, we reached out to our colleagues at the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and worked with Ms. Opila and her staff on a number of issues. We have contacted them because they are the responsive and responsible agency in dealing with such matters. And in parallel with that, distinct but in parallel with that, we have also been working with the state to create a memorandum of understanding that goes beyond the strict regulatory requirements that construction of the Parkway would do. And we have worked very cooperatively and exchanged a number of different ideas about how we can document best practices that can be and will be taken during the course of construction. So I will invite Jennifer to present her actual findings and the review of the soil sampling that we had taken and the steps subsequent to that encounter of the anomalous sample, which is about a year ago today. So with that, Jennifer, I invite you in.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bill, and Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jennifer Opila. I am the Director of the Hazardous Materials and Waste Management Division at the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And right now I'm also serving in a role as an interim director for the Water Quality Control Division at the department. We, as Bill said, after, we had been kind of working with Bill and the Parkway Authority on a number of, you know, exchanges of ideas prior to the soil sampling efforts that were undertaken by the Parkway Authority. After the anomalous sample was found last August, again, almost a year ago today, we decided there was, the, the, not, the, the higher sample did cause some concern among some members of the public as well as our administration and the governor's office. So we took a number of, we took a number of steps to try to analyze that and what it might mean in regard to public health. So we collected all of the recent soil sampling results from 2019 that were being conducted by both the Jefferson Parkway as well as the National Wildlife Refuge for the Greenway Project. And we, and there were some other local government and nonprofit groups that had, that collected recent samples. And we created a map on our website that is a kind of a GIS type map that actually plots all of the samples that were taken. And you can actually look at the results of all of the samples to try to get an idea of what kinds of results, how many samples were taken, where the samples were taken, and what the results of the samples were. We also consulted with a number of outside academic experts in radiation sciences from Colorado State University. And they reviewed our soil sample, they reviewed all the soil sampling results as a third-party review, just to look at the methodology, the samples were taken and, you know, and look at the results. And then they also helped us with a literature review regarding plutonium and plutonium in the, the types of plutonium that were used at Rocky Flats and have been found, you know, this residual contamination that's been found in the past. And then lastly, we performed what we call a radiation dose assessment through our radiation program, which is also in my division. And the dose assessment looks at what the theoretical dose would be for Parkway workers and nearby residents during the modeling of a worst-case scenario for construction of the Parkway where the concentration, the higher concentration, the 264 picocur per gram, which was the anomalous sample. If we took that sample and it was, it was scattered at that concentration of plutonium across the corridor and down to a depth of two meters or six feet. And we, if we had that much contamination, which would again be a worst-case scenario, we did some modeling to see what, what would be the potential radiation dose to both construction workers during the construction as well as nearby residents during construction. And what we found is that together, these efforts paint a consistent picture that remaining Rocky Flats plutonium in the Jefferson Parkway transportation corridor poses a small risk well within the regulatory limits for radiation. This conclusion is consistent with previous findings and the Rocky Flats cleanup record. We determined that no regulatory oversight would be required by the CDPHE radiation program because radiation doses would be so low to would-be Parkway workers as well as off-site residents. Even in a worst-case scenario, they are well within regulatory limits. That said, there are other construction project-type requirements concerning air and water quality that may apply to the Parkway. We will continue to share information about Rocky Flats and its history with the public as well as any pertinent monitoring data. You guys received a write-up of our report with your materials for this meeting. And that report, as well as our data map and a number of other resources are available on our website. And so with that, I would like to just open it up to any questions that the council may have for me.
Hey, council questions? And just jump in like you did during our last session since I don't have the hands up button, so.
Well, Mark, I have a number of questions.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Jennifer, if I might call you Jennifer. In, in the beginning of the study, it, there's a statement that says that the CDPHE and Colorado Central Cancer Registry studies have not detected an overall pattern of cancers tied to Rocky Flats. Has there actually been studies of humans that live near Rocky Flats? Or any animal studies that have looked at, I know that animal studies are a little bit more difficult than human since they die a lot sooner. And I understand that, you know, effects from plutonium would not happen immediately. But have there ever been any studies of humans living near Rocky Flats?
There have been a number of cancer studies, looking at a variety of different cancers and a variety of different geographic locations as well as populations. There's lots of, that is not my expertise. And in fact, that part of the cancer registry and those studies actually take place in another part of the Health Department. I'd be happy to provide Kristin with links to our website that give all the details on those cancer studies as well as information about who you could speak to specifically about those cancer studies.
Okay, thank you. And then also in your report, you talk about that it wasn't feasible to collect soil samples from every location at the site. That comment, does that mean that you did not collect samples all over the site? Or just the fact that you, what, what does that mean to you when you say that?
Okay, so are you specifically, again, I don't know exactly where in the report you're referencing, but are you specifically, are you specifically speaking about, so you're, you're speaking about the Parkway Authority soil samples? Is that your question?
Yes, on page three, it says that although an extensive program exists to sample RFETS as the surface soils for actinides, it is not feasible to collect soil samples from every location at the site. I wanted to have you explain that comment.
So again, I, are you, I'm sorry, I want to get directly to your quote. Is it on page three of the executive summary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on page three, last, last paragraph.
Yes, I see it now. So, so these are actually speaking about an actual summary report from the 2002 Actonite Migration Evaluation Pathway Report. So again, you can't collect samples from every single, every single piece of dirt throughout the entire refuge, I believe is what they're getting to. You know, these types of sampling programs have a grid-type structure where you, 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 you use an analysis program to try to determine how big you need the grid to be and what you're looking for and how many samples you need to take to make sure that you get what's a statistical, you know, appropriate, statistically appropriate amount of samples.
And are those samples randomly selected or, or not?
It's, I don't, I am not familiar with this exact study. However, most of these types of programs are done in a grid-type formation. So Bill can probably explain a little bit about the soil sampling that they did. It was very typical of the type of soil sampling that was done in the refuge.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councilmember Ford, I think that the answer, and I was not the person who did it, is that there is an algorithm that determined throughout about two-plus miles about what would be the appropriate distances and spacing between the 250 samples that ultimately were taken. So it's not, it is a pattern, but it's not a rigid grid pattern. It was determined by algorithm and there's some discussion in the CSU review that talked about the appropriateness of how that sampling was determined. And then the CSU evaluator's opinion about that, which seemed, as my recollection of reading the report, said it was inappropriate and standard methodology.
And the reason why I'm asking that question is because reading the document, there's a message of a 0.5% error rate. And my understanding of sampling is, is that you cannot come up with an error rate unless it's a randomized sample. And there was nothing mentioned in the report about being randomized. So that is a question that I have because normally when research is written, limitations of the study are always added to the report. And there were no limitations on the methodology as presented in the report. So that's where that question comes from.
Nancy, I'd be happy to talk to our folks and have them generate a specific response to your question if that would be of interest to you.
It would be because how, how sampling is done makes a very, a big determination of a study. Even a non-randomized sample can be very accurate, but it has to be based on something for it to be that accurate. It has, there has to be studies that were done previously or some methodology that has been done because there's an element of reliability in work like that. So that is, nothing of that is mentioned in this report. And so having come from a research background, by analyzing this report, and I've read it word for word, those are things that I would have a question about. I do have another question. I have many, so I'm just going to ask a few and then, and we can come back to me. It also talked about analyzing soil samples for americium-241 as well and also the different types of, well, the isotopic plutonium and the isotopic uranium. But I'm interested in the americium since my understanding is that americium is a pretty dangerous element or chemical. I'm not quite sure what it is, to tell you the truth. Um, has that been analyzed at all? Was anything found in the soil samples?
Bill, do you want to speak specifically to your dataset?
Well, um, again, I'm, I'm not the person who ran the analysis. My understanding is that there were actually six isotopes that were evaluated or sought and tested in the course of that sampling process. The americium was one of them. And it was one of the six that were studied. My recollection of the results is that, consistent with what CDPHE has found in the past, there was nothing extraordinary or unusual about the amount or the concentration of americium that was found to be present.
Okay. Um, okay, I'll stop there and I'll come back.
Other questions before we go back to Nancy?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
You bet.
I thought that there are a lot of questions about why was sampling really limited to the top two inches versus going down eight inches or one foot or two foot? And I know there was some discussion in the review about the rationale for examining in particular those top two inches. I'm thinking that there may be people listening that would be interested in what that, what the reason for that might be.
So again, we did not, we did not, we did not design the study that was the sampling that was taken by the Parkway Authority. So perhaps if you would like to justify the authority's approach, which we agreed with, you know, and, and it has, the, the report, you know, agrees that it was an appropriate approach, but.
Specifically to the discussion that the folks that you had contracted with CSU, who I think within the report had some detailed discussion about that. Again, without having to read the report, it was certainly standard methodology and one that felt it accurately portrayed, as you had discussed, Jennifer, within the protocol of sampling versus 100% of every particle of dirt out there. That makes sense because of the nature of wind-blown particles, is that, that is naturally where they tend to show up, if they're going to show up, is at the very top of the soil.
So yes, that is, that is correct, is that we do anticipate, the, the historic literature on the wind-blown contamination that exists within the refuge and the Parkway Transportation Corridor shows that it is primarily in the, in the first couple of inches of the soil. However, what's important here is that we, when we did our modeling for radiation dose, we actually, you know, did our worst-case scenario based on the highest concentration that was found down to a depth of two meters. So that even if there was higher concentrations at a lower depth, we believe that our modeling contributes or actually takes that into consideration.
Well, that, that's an interesting question because I did have a consult, a constituent asked me that question. Because building a road, you're going to have to take the road down at least, what, 20 feet? And what about, and I know that there are maps. I'm, I'm on the stewardship council, I'm new, but, so I haven't seen a lot of the, you know, maps and everything. I don't know. We know that there are things buried there. We know that it does transport through air and water. So there is a potential that it could possibly be deeper. Although I understand that the study said that the majority of, of what we would find would be in the first two inches there.
So when you say we know stuff is buried there, I assume you're speaking about within the central operable unit, the, the actual area that is retained by the Department of Energy?
That's correct, but we also know that water is a means for things to travel. Plutonium does travel through water and through, under the ground. You know, we, we've not studied the entire site as your report shows. So yes, a lot of it is contained, but we do know that there have been some breaches in the past.
So we have a monitoring network around the central operable unit that would detect any of those types of contaminants from coming from the central operable unit into the area of the refuge or the transportation corridor. We have had, we have no data to indicate that there is a, any kind of underlying contamination that is being leaked into the area of the transportation corridor from the central operable unit.
Okay, so, so again, I'll ask that question for my constituents. So you're confident then to say that there would not be anything below a certain level?
We are confident that we, that, that construction of the Parkway is not going to produce and a, a, a risk to the, a Parkway construction worker or a resident that would, that would need to be under regulatory control, that we are confident of. Now, there is a very slight possibility that there could be something out there that would be discovered during Parkway construction. And if that were the case, then there are already agreements in place between the Department of Energy, EPA, and the State Health Department to basically stop all activities when anything like that occurs and to evaluate what the situation is.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just ask a question, first of all.
You bet, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Jennifer, for being here and bringing this report to us. And I, I'm really more curious around the, the thought process or the methodology around why you used CSU as kind of a third party. What was the, I think it was a great idea. So I'm not challenging the idea. I just, I'm curious from, from CDPHE's perspective, why do you go out to a third party to get, you know, an opinion? Because again, when I look at it from the state's perspective, I look at you and your department and everybody there at CDPHE as the experts. So just to.
Well, thank you. While we have a, well, I, what I feel like is a very competent team in a variety of aspects at CDPHE, we always are, look for opportunities to partner with, with other outside entities, particularly in areas that are, that are of high interest, you know, to the public and, you know, to constituents and to elected officials. And so CSU is actually a premier university for the discipline of what's called health physics, which is a fancy way of saying radiation sciences. And so having them in our backyard, so to speak, is actually a very good resource for us. And this is not the only project that we have, that we have partnered with them on.
Well, again, I, I think it was wise because I, you know, there, there's a lot of questions from constituents, a lot of questions around, you know, the safety. And, and I think that from the Parkway's perspective, and one of my other roles is I, I'm also the chairman of the Parkway Authority. And so, you know, making sure that we, putting that hat on for just a second, making sure that, you know, we are doing things safely, that's a, that's a big concern for us at the Parkway. It's a big concern for me as a member of the Arvada City Council and representing the constituents who live in District Four, which is where I represent. And so, you know, I, looking at this from all angles is an important measure for me. And I, again, appreciate the work that your department's done. And I'm glad that you didn't just stop there, that you took it a step further. And I didn't know that CSU was known for that expertise. And so again, you know, leveraging that expertise, I think, is, is, is critical to this. And again, I think that as I've read through this, there's, for me, having grown up here and seeing Rocky Flats while it was in its active state and while, and then it threw the shutdown, it's, it's good to know that the studies have been reinforced time after time after time. And we continue to see that there's no great danger or harm as long as you stay out of that operable unit area. I don't know what's over there and I don't need to know or want to know for that matter, but I think that it's, it's good to know that that, that it is safe to proceed with the Parkway. So thank you very much for your, your report and in your time with us to answer all of our questions.
Thank you.
I appreciate the explanation as to why it's CSU instead of CU doing the research. So it was a little, it was a little suspect to me for a second. Hello, Mr. Archer. Bye, Mr. Archer.
Oh, Rams, don't, don't forget, I have a degree there.
Yep, yep. Okay.
I have a quick follow-up.
You bet.
Um, so just to follow up on this Ford's questions, real quick. So I, I'm new to council. I don't have the same, same background. So I apologize if this has been answered in a previous workshop. But in terms of the depth, I've, I've heard two inches, I've even heard six feet. But how deep will construction actually go? How, how deep will construction take place? And have soil samples been done at that depth? It's, it's my understanding the plutonium is heavier than dirt, but at the same time, I, I welcome the, the scientific expertise on that.
Lauren, if I may, the, the final construction plans have not yet been drawn. That's really part of the process of going through a public-private partnership is that the authority has created about 10% designs. But the ultimate height, depth, and consideration will be all part of the package that the private contractor will have to ultimately propose, be reviewed, and then be approved. There were some soil samples, I don't remember exactly, maybe half a dozen or 10, that were taken at various depths. I know at least four were taken at points where there are going to be structures that are going to be built because we want to know about what the subsoil conditions are. And those were also tested. And again, my understanding of just the mechanics is that most of the plutonium that had been carried because of fires that had taken place on site were wind-borne and therefore only settled in the top inch or two of ground. And that's not normal that it migrates underground at all. You're absolutely correct. It's much heavier. And so kind of where it settles in place is, you know, except for large windstorms, is where it tends to stay. And Jennifer, I'm sure you know much more about the mechanics of that than I do. Was that responsive to your question?
Yes, thank you, Bill.
You bet.
I have another question for Jennifer. Jennifer, this report, I read through all the studies in the back. They talked about the smallness of the particles being probably more harmful in terms of lung inhalation. And I wanted to know, what was the relationship between the picocuries per gram versus the size? So, you know, like we take this anomalous 264 picocur, picocuries per gram. What does that mean in terms of the size of that particle?
So that is a very technical question that I do not have the answer for. I am not a, I am, I'm not that technical. We can provide you with, with some information on the size of plutonium versus. But, but one thing that's important is that the 264 picocuries per gram, it does not necessarily indicate that that is pure, all pure plutonium. So these, this is plutonium that is, that is attached to other types of particles in a sample. And so, but if, but we'd be happy to provide you with some more information regarding the size of the particle. So in our literature review did speak and did review a number of different, different publications regarding particle size and the potential dose. And, you know, we found kind of a lot of differing opinions on that in the literature.
Yeah, and I thought that was really interesting. And I also especially found it interesting that most of the studies seem to support the LNT, which again goes back to what you folks use. And, you know, this non-threshold perspective that believes that essentially no level of exposure, and it's to a chemical now. It says however small is capable of generating a carcinogenic response. And what I found, a couple of things that I found interesting by looking at the results. First thing that I found interesting is that when it talks about phase one, it talks about 25 samples being zero to two inches and 21 samples being six to eight in depth, that adds to 46, so I'm not sure where that other sample is. The other question I had too is, is I don't, from this information, I don't understand why we're looking at, we're testing with two different acids. We're, you know, we're doing the one with the, where is it? The carbonate and then the other one is the, and if you look at the different, the acid leaching, if you look at the different phases, you know, so you look at phase one, for example, and you see the mean, the means of the picocuries per gram, there's no consistency in terms of, you know, acid leaching versus carbonate. So I was thinking to myself, well, why, why are we testing with both of those substances? What are we looking for? You know, because, and looking at the data, there's nothing consistent about it as far as which one produced higher picocuries per gram and, and that kind of thing. And then I was looking at the data thinking, okay, so what's the relationship? Because most of the sampling was low in terms of picocuries per gram. But again, what does that mean in terms of the size of the particle? Because that's what people are really concerned about is that inhalation. And based on all the literature, yes, there's a couple of studies that said that, you know, small doses might even be beneficial. I would ask, who was the sponsor of those studies? But it doesn't really relate to me in terms of health. It just relates to me in terms of size of gram or picocuries per gram, but that doesn't tell me, that doesn't relate, in my opinion, to the literature review, which really talked about size of particle in the lungs.
So the liter, the question of, of health comes down to radiation dose. That is why the primary takeaway in this analysis is our radiation dose assessment. And that radiation dose assessment, again, took a variety of different scenarios, which are detailed in the report, including a worst case scenario where we would take the anomalous sample, which was the highest one that was found, and we would distribute it down, again, two meters across the entire Parkway corridor. That would be a worst case scenario because that is much higher than, than any of the data that was shown. And we plugged all of that information into our model, which includes modeling for inhalation. So that, our model takes into account the inhalation, the potential of risk from inhalation. And what we found is that even in the worst case scenario, that radiation dose, while it does present a small risk, is not a risk that would require regulatory oversight.
And what is regulatory oversight? So what, you know, the licensing that you mentioned in the report, what is, what does that include?
So that's 20, what's called a 25-milligram exposure per year would be an area where we would start to look at whether or not, to, to any individual, either the construction worker or to an offsite resident. And what our modeling actually found was that the highest calculated dose to a construction worker was less than half of that. It was 11.52 milligram per year. And the highest calculated dose was to a resident was 2.6-milligram per year.
And those are based on human studies from Rocky Flats?
No, those are, which, the, the regulatory threshold is, is just that, it's a regulatory threshold.
And that's based on what? What, what is that based on? The 25 number?
It's the number that is used in all, for not just Rocky Flats, but all radiation regulatory programs across the entire country.
Well, they had to come up with that from somewhere, though. I mean, they didn't just pick it from the air, so it came from research or came from something.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't have that information at my, at the tips of my fingers.
So you just believe numbers, but you don't know where they come from, though?
I know that there are regulatory thresholds and that is what we, that's what we do in regulatory programs, is that we are given thresholds by the regulations that are, are deemed by people across the country as being protective. And then we implement those.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I may, Jennifer, thank you for your time and for being here. Real quick, those regulatory thresholds, so you say a construction worker is half, it'd be even less than that for a resident. If somebody were to be exposed to that, do we know what the impact on the, on the human body would be if it was in their lungs or something? Would it be negligible? Would it be significant potential? I'm just trying to understand what the actual sort of impacts would be if that were to happen.
So Councilmember Ford also spoke a little bit to the linear no threshold theory, which is what is the protective theory that is used in radiation sciences and actually in most sciences that, that look at carcinogens. And what that, that theory basically says is that any single exposure can cause cancer. But you, but you obviously, the less exposure that you get, the less risk you have from causing cancer. And so, so, you know, these, so what we do is we set these regulatory limits at areas that we feel are below, that definitely are way below any automatic, what's called an acute dose or what would, 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 would cause an automatic, some kind of an automatic impact to the body. These, these numbers are well below anything that has been found in radiation studies, particularly with the, you know, the bombs in, in Japan. Those where we, that's where most of that information comes from. And so these numbers are well below any of those, any of those exposures. And so again, like any, any, and it's not just radiation, but anytime that you are exposed to some kind of a carcinogen, there's a possibility that you will get cancer. But that, that risk is very low at very low exposures is what we're looking at here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Not seeing any. I appreciate the presentation and the information. Nancy, you've asked some good questions. Mr. Ray, I'm sure you'll do some follow-up. Do that.
Yes, if you guys would like to have any, Kristin has my contact information as well as Bill does. If you guys want to send any questions directly to me, I'd be happy to get back with you. And thank you for having me.
You bet. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Viper?
Yeah, it's just a comment. Jennifer, I just want to tell you, I appreciate the interactive map and everything that the state put together over the property. And there's a lot of wealth of information there. If you click through a few things in the studies and so forth. So I just wanted to highlight the good work of visualizing the information. So thank you.
Thank you. We really are trying to make the information that we have as accessible as possible to elected officials and members of the public. So any feedback we get on that, we appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I thought you did the, an excellent job on the literature review.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, Mr. Devin, anything else that you want to cover during this?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's all for tonight from us.
Okay, fair enough. We stand adjourned. Everybody have a good-